I've got 10 o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this public hearing to order. We do have form. This is a public hearing for Vega Solar. And this is the Guidelines and Criteria for Property Redevelopment Tax Abatement Act. Rose, I don't know if you have a presentation?
Oh. Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. So we needed, as a requirement of the new section of actual agreements, they require a public hearing on a 30-day notice. And so earlier, early November, we had the company Vega Solar here giving you a little bit of update. This project is a project that is located off of 755 in the La Cebu Nada area. The project is expected to be about $140 million or so. It may expand a bit, but right now, the agreement agreement that we hope to enter, and we'll talk a little bit more about that during Commissioners' Court, is an agreement that allows that project to move forward. Their expectation is to begin construction in early to mid-2022, and to have that project complete by the following year, the way they normally do. And so we have been very successful in getting these payment agreements to ensure that we have new investment. And at this point, we would only say that we are hopeful and encourage Commissioners' Court to allow us to continue to do that.
It is a public hearing, so anyone can comment or question or anything. The court is pretty much aware of this project, and it's certainly a good project. Any questions or comments? If not, I guess we'll stop the public hearing at 10:15. So I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting for County of Starr, Monday, December 13. Let the record show we do have form, everyone being present. Everyone will please stand for the presence.
I want to go see if someone provided the [inaudible].
Public comments? I don't think we had any. A program of minutes, we don't have any to table that.
We're just going to table, Your Honor.
Second, moved in second, all in favor, please, aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The auditor is not here yet, so we'll skip item five and six. I guess we can go into our report. Let's jump over well before. Is there anyone from out of town that needs to be coming for the court at this time? Okay, if not, let's go to reports, the Texas as a collector, Ms. Salinas.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Petten, your hearing presented. All right, everybody. The total countywide collections for November of 2021 were $96,507.35. As of November of 2020, there were $7639,346.37. There was a total collection of $2,011,413 with 98 cents more than last year. Our total collections for countywide entities were $5,678.49. Our current collections in 2020 were $4,671,878.37. There was a total collection of $1,995,171.27 more than last year. Our total delay collection for November, just for start counting, was $186,288.27 dollars with 7 cents. Total delay collections in November of 2020 were $457,027.27 dollars with 5 cents. There was a total delay collection of $29,461.42 cents more than last year. As of November the 30th, the tax office has collected 29% of the projected 2021 collections. Collections remaining are $7,808,24.10. Also, the tax office has collected 13% of the projected 2021 collections. Projected 2021 collections remaining were $373,349.69. This is my report for November November. I apologize for not being here the last two Commissioners' Courts. I wasn't supposed to come back. If you have any questions to my prior reports, if you have any concerns.
One question, on the numbers. For example, the $9 million, $9.6 that I might collect, is that a total of all collections, including the hospital, the CIA, the [inaudible]? Is it everyone, or is that just the counties?
The total countywide collections, except the hospitals, the STC, and the [inaudible].
Okay, so when you say that collections are 49%, based on that $9 million, the 40, is it just the county, or is it all the entities combined?
The 40, the percentage that, 49% percentage that you have collected is based on your and your overall.
Okay. I'll get with you later.
I have 15 million, 49%, but it's your projected by [inaudible].
I'll get with you later, because really, I don't know how the court feels. You know, what I'm interested in is the collections that you've done for the county. I don't care about the hospital or anyone else, it's just how much you put in for the county.
Okay, and this page.
Because that total, they're finding a [inaudible].
The total countywide collections.
The [inaudible], the hospital, the STC.
He cannot be pointing at percent of the projected revenues that you with his budget. It's all combined, but it's not everything belongs to the county.
Okay, understood. On the third section of, you have any [inaudible]? On the third section, 30 amounts for the county.
But you were talking about the percentage.
Okay, you want the percentage for the county only?
We want to know what the percentage of the, they say that the judge has built a budget of 10 million, and we're supposed to collect 80% of those 10 million. How much have we collected?
Up to now.
Up to now, only on that portion, not with the [inaudible].
He projected 80 out of 10, 80 out of 15?
You want a separate amount for the county only?
Right, because this is not given in the true figure.
Yeah, you see, and again, I speak for myself. I'm not interested in percent we've collected for STC or the hospital or the [inaudible]. I mean, that's their problem.
Yes.
What I want to know is how much have we collected for the county? And what percent is it of the projected collection that you have? Let give us a true picture.
Okay, you want it sent to your office, or you want to see it in the next?
The next report, the actual amount that we collected, because we have $9 million here, and this, probably county portion is about seven or six and a half. I don't, it's not an actual figure for the county. We want to know what is the county portion?
Okay, I'll bring it down to you, and then I'll have it waiting for the next Commissioners.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Let's go back to the gas department. Well, before, before the gas, let's go to the vendors list, Mr. Pettis.
Yes, good morning, Judge. Commissioners. We should have a copy of the vendors list. We reviewed these vendors, and we recommend [inaudible].
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable, please, aye.
Aye.
Rose. Motion carries. The next thing is the claims.
Again, you should have a copy of the claim report in front of you, and we reviewed those claims, and we recommend [inaudible].
Well, [inaudible].
Second. Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable, please, aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I'll do now, we can go with our reports. The gas department?
Judge and Commissioner, good morning. The report is before you. I'm sure it's included in your packet. If you have any questions, let me know. The gas department is doing pretty good. Facing lines required by the state. We do so many feat within a year, and they're doing really well doing that.
I notice that our percent losses have been very steady and low, 2%, which is really good. So I think that's one of the reasons they were ending up.
It was a new ban. It was a new ban.
Any questions on your gas report? Transfer station?
Also, that report is before you. We've had a lot of activity in the transfer station. And because of that, we've had a lot of breakdowns also. And we've been having to purchase equipment, or not equipment, but like the squeegees are very expensive. Those squeegees are used on the loader of the, on the loader to push the trash, and they're very costly, the reason we're in the [inaudible]. Very bad.
Whatever happened to the loader and the equipment that burned down?
I'm glad to ask, Commissioner. Our attorney is still working on that.
So we what?
Have replaced that. We bought a used one, because we need to have that transfer station operate.
Did you all purchase another one?
Yes, a used one for [inaudible]. That was like 20 some thousand, right, Judge?
Yeah, 20 some.
That's how we've been able to operate.
Yeah, and the lawsuit has been filed. So they're negotiating with the insurance company to see if we can settle out of court, but so far, it hasn't been settled.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. County clerk, Mr. Pettis?
Morning, Judges. We should have a report in November, the month of November. Just going to highlight the ones that are pretty pertin to us more than anything. Records management, we have 5966 collected, copies, 25,130. Records archive, 5749. And then what was due to the, county clerk due to the general fund is $15,993.30. Been pretty consistent, pretty steady every month, about $5,000 for our records and archive. So it's about $60,000 a year that we're collecting. And then it's been pretty, pretty steady with what we turn over to the general. We have about two months, two and a half, three months for the marks and brands, just to let your constituents know in your areas that we're still doing that. We're trying to see, maybe at the beginning of the year, we can host some sort of a drive there at the RY. We need to talk to [inaudible] to see if maybe we can just kind of set up a table and have navigation, so that people can know that they can do that there with us.
On a Friday?
Yeah, on a Friday, yes, yes. So we're going to look at that for, as we turn the year in January, as it's getting closer. But other than that, we're still being pretty consistent with questions coming in.
You know, also for information, we're getting ready to fund. It's going to cost about a million dollars to automate all the records that the county clerks, and that's going to be coming from the COVID money. It does qualify.
Yes.
So we're going to do half now, and when we get the remainder of the money, we'll do the other half. It's interest free.
Right.
So we'll go that.
It'll help the constituents of the county and across the country that want to go on there and purchase. It'll be a lot easier. They'll just purchase online. They won't have to physically come in to the office. All the records will be digitized online from 84, because we have 84 right now, to sovereignty, beginning of time, all land records. Of course, you want to slowly continue doing that, but it'll make it easier for people working at the office, and money will generate by itself for anybody in the world.
And it creates a safety shield that those records don't get lost or destroyed or mysteriously.
Right, yeah, we've had a couple of leaks here and there, but you know, thankfully, everything's good still. So yeah, but like the judge said, we don't want anything to get lost. This is how we can protect it, by creating this. And thank you to Commissioners' Court and Judge for allowing us to get this project going. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff's Department?
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
This is the revenue report, projected revenues for November 2021. Amount for the city of Orlando, $180. The USA Solutions, $1,500. United States Market Service, transport services, $6,402. Medical services, $254. Marketing services, $64,625. Idaho County, $190, $20, total, $262, $181. The account for December 1st was $32,000 limit. Idaho County, $113, Star County, $74, total, $220. The average, the daily average occupation for Idaho, $106. And [inaudible] was $39 for November. This time of that year, from November 2020 to November 2021, we show a negative of $35,233. We have a difference there. We have to fix up the numbers. And this is [inaudible].
You know, I just want to add that even though the number this month was lower than last month, it's still a very positive number. It's above what I had projected, so we're still doing good. Also, the other thing that, and I guess everyone should be aware of it now, but we had the jail inspection done a week ago. And I'm proud to say that our jail was one of very few that passed without any demarks or whatever they're called. In fact, I was there for the exit, and the lady that gave the inspection was very good about commenting about how clean it was and how it was being run. And she said that in all the jails she'd been doing, this was the first jail that didn't have any demerits. So congratulations to you and to her. That's very good. Any questions? Thank you. Industrial Bridge, International Bridge.
Good morning, Judge. This is the total revenue traffic for November 2021. It's $187,623. And then we show an increase of $23,630 for the month of November 2021 compared to the month of November 2020. And we also show an increase of $8,319.50 for the collections of the month of November 2021 compared to October 2021. We have the excess of $160.92. And we have the grant total for collections for November 2021, Do you have any questions?
One question, on the reports, the out of the trucks, all that, that is what the tolls?
I added the, for the extra axles, sir.
Okay, no, but that's the tolls that we collect.
Yes.
That's traffic going southbound.
Right.
That's right. Any other questions? It's doing a lot better.
Yes.
That's real good. Thank you. Treasurers' Report?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. This is my report for the month of November 2021. You have my report in front of you, to just follow along with me. The total amount for the general fund is at $1,704,283.69. For the road bridge, the balance is at $328,928.27. For the enterprise funds, the total balance is at $713,489.45. And the drainage district, the total balance is at $3,291,849.42, which brings the rent total of all the bonds to $6,385,84.84. That's my report.
Okay, so the, but the monies that she said have come in so far?
Yes, they have.
Nine million, have they gone to the Treasurers?
No, there's a separate account for those monies. They're not reflected here.
Okay, yeah, because I, okay, and I guess we'll open some CDs? Mr. Pettis, open some of that money?
I think we have talked about doing it.
Yeah, I know they're not paying much, so.
These monies are served, but they're not, the ones that are projected, like the $9 million that the tax collectors have collected, this is a separate fund?
This is a separate fund, yes, yes.
That are not being used or will not be used?
I don't know if they're used or not, but they're not included here.
Yeah, I guess, I guess they haven't been transferred. They're in transition.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, once they get to the Treasurers', then they'll be in our report.
Yeah, then we're in a separate, we're in a separate account, we're in a separate account. We open the account sometime.
That's okay. These are separate accounts. These are not going to come into this year budget?
What she's collecting, yes. Yeah, what she's collecting, that's what we use to operate the.
Yeah, that goes into the, I believe, the general fund.
Well, some general, some road bridges, and some to the drainage.
Yes.
But the money that she collected are not reflected here?
No. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable, Mr. Pettis?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My report is for the month of November 2021, which is the second month of the fiscal year. I should have a copy of the report in front of you. On page one, part one reflects the reconciled balances of the general fund at $1,513.18.84. Road and Bridge at $229,123.73. And the Payroll Hearing Fund at $437,649.53. Part two reflects the expenditure report from the general fund as of November 30, 2021, as a percentage of the year elapsed, which is 16.72%. In summary, the general fund amount expended year-to-date is $3,223,650, or 15.91%, falling below the 16.72. And then you have a breakdown of several of the departments reflected at the bottom of page one and continued through page two. Those departments exceeding the 16.72% are shown in bold. On page three, part three reflects the expenditure report for the Road and Bridge Fund, again, as of November 30, 2021. The Road and Bridge Fund amount expended year-to-date is $864,414, or 13.21%, again, also falling below the 16.72% of the year elapsed. Below that, you have a breakdown of the numbers for some of the departments within the Road and Bridge Consolidated Fund. The remainder of page three and continued through page four, you have the year-to-date summary of revenue reports for the general fund and the Road and Bridge Fund. Year-to-date revenues collected are $1,735,582, or 5.57%, and $649,021, or 9.92%, respectively. Page five reflects the summary of revenues and expenses for the enterprise funds as of November 30, 2021. The International Bridge reflects revenues of $367,265, with expenditures of $223,904, or an excess of $143,361. The Gas Operating System reflects year-to-date revenues of $163,848, with expenditures of $146,026, an excess of $17,822. And the Solid Waste Transfer Station reflects year-to-date revenues of $13,783, with expenditures of $146,577, showing a deficit of $32,794. Page six reflects a summary of the debt owed as of November 30, 2021. The total current balance is $1,665,855. Behind that, you've got an additional five pages. Those are just a report on the expenditure for the American Rescue Plan Act for countywide in the four precincts. Any questions on any of that?
Any question?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pettis. Okay, moving along to item number eight. This is an action item. And this is to approve a burn ban. This is what the court wishes. I know it's kind of green right now, but it could be a reason of the winds that we've been having. It could be a problem, but we'll approve.
You are, are going, perhaps, object to it? You have to spell that we will go remove those.
Yes, yeah, and I was going to mention that.
Can we, can we do it under this?
I don't know if we can or not. I was going to, you know, we had passed an order sometime back where, on the burn ban, when people go and they get permission to burn stuff? Yeah, that they had, that they would have to pay. But this is totally getting out of hand, so we wanted to do away with that. In other words, that's part of the services that our fire department should be doing.
Correct.
And not charging. Could we, at this point, remove it, even though it's not an agenda item, under the burn ban?
Because the Commissioners' Court created it under specific [inaudible]. We would have to give notice.
Okay.
Yeah. But the court, that certainly is within the purview of the court to remove the action.
I just forgot to put it on the agenda, but yeah, I think we need to.
And the fee is $50?
Yeah. Yeah, and the problem that I have with that is that only certain employees can go and do it, so they're getting additional pay for something that they should be doing anyhow. You know, it's a service to the community. You shouldn't be charged.
So they're charging, and they're getting paid. They want to go to the individuals too?
Yes.
Under the color of the county? I don't think that that's permissible.
I don't either, but I haven't, I haven't been able to get control of everything. And I've met with Mr. Moreno, and I told him that there's a lot of things there that I see questionable. For one, they had their own checking accounts and stuff. That should be under the Commissioners'. Not under, and then they call it a volunteer fire department, and it's not a volunteer fire department. It's under the Starr County.
But they're being paid. It's not volunteer.
Yeah, yeah.
One of the things, it sounds very much, very similar to what in the past it used to be, the sheriff's office with surf citations, deputies with surf citations, and charge as civil process service during the time that they were working as a deputy. And that was put us, it was put to a stop. The sheriff has got control of that, and so you no longer have, that kind of sounds like that, that they're being paid by the county, and they're working out, going into. and they're working out, going into this, and being paid by the county for doing it, and also by the individuals that comes around for sale.
Okay, yeah, and then it's pretty much it, and, you know, now that you bring that up, I have an issue with that also with the DA. They're paying some of our employees to serve their paper, I don't think they should. You know, that's, I mean, that's part of the duty, you know, but, but again, that's another, another topic. But anyhow, uh, I guess I'll need to put it on for our next meeting.
A topic that you probably have a couple of times.
Yeah, and, and, but I forget.
I'll make sure, yes, sir, I'll make sure it's on the next agenda.
Okay, I do have a motion to approve the burn ban.
Okay.
Second, uh, discussion. Oliver, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item nine is also an, uh, to approve the prohibiting of the aerial fireworks that we pass all the time before fireworks season.
Move it.
Okay, move it, second to approve, discussion. Oliver, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item ten is to amend the twenty-one holiday calendar.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
What are they gonna amend?
No, otro día.
Eh? Christmas, along that, and Thursday.
Well, that, that's what was requested, uh.
Your Honor, I, I want to tell you something, I'm against it, because there, there's a lot of people that come in, using the services from the county, and I mean, Christmas is on Saturday, so why should we go Thursday? Too many DPs, I mean, there are a lot of work to do.
Yeah, the, the, the argument that was used with me was that, uh, Christmas falls on a Saturday?
Yeah.
So they're only getting Friday, because they get Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, which of course, so they wanted another day to get at least two days for Christmas. Uh, I, I have the same feeling.
I don't, I don't see why, Your Honor, because this, we have to operate, the county has to be open to, for the public, and I think that they, it should be open.
Yeah, but if the court.
My motion to approve, Your Honor.
I do have a motion, is there a second?
Okay.
Second discussion, any further discussion? Oliver, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
I oppose.
And I oppose. So it's three, four, two opposed, the motion carries.
So that's for the twenty-third, Your Honor, Friday?
Yeah. Yeah, because it's Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Good, and this will be for Thursday, twenty-third.
Yeah, okay, uh, eleven is to approve the twenty-twenty-two holiday calendar. Uh, on this one, and, and you all have copies of that, uh, in your, in your packet, uh, what we tried to do is follow what Hidalgo County has, it's exactly what Hidalgo has, with the exception that we have two election days. Uh, Hidalgo doesn't have it, because they don't use their facilities. We do, so we need to close down to use the courthouse and the annex, they, they use the annex for counting, they use the courthouse to vote. So that's the reason for those other two days, other than that, it's exactly what Hidalgo County has, but.
We got so many other days, I mean, we got work to do, and I mean.
Well, you throw twenty-four, say.
No, twenty-one, twenty-two, we're not so busy, they collect, we have to come and do business.
Yeah, but, well, I can't, you know, that, that's what I'm proposing, what Hidalgo has, with the exception of, uh.
Motion to approve, Your Honor. Twenty-twenty-two holiday calendar, calendar.
Move it, second, discussion. Oliver, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Uh, item twelve is an action item, oh, this is on the appraisal, uh, report, uh, we, we do need to submit the votes, and.
The nominees?
Yeah, the nominees are Commissioner Bennett, Commissioner Garza. If it's okay with the court, we'll just divide by how many votes we have in, in those two. I, I need a motion.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Okay.
Move it, second, discussion. Oliver, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Uh, item thirteen is an action item, and this is to approve or accept the interest payment, uh, on JW Power Company lawsuit, that's what we discussed last time in the second session, uh, they're, they're asking that we go ahead and, and pay the interest, and I, I really don't think we have much of a choice, it's a court order, but it does need to be approved by the court.
Motion to approve?
Move it, second, discussion. Oliver, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item fourteen, action item, is to approve resolution in support of Operation Lone Star Grant, uh, this is forty-three, eighty-two, six oh one. That's the, uh, the money that the Sheriff's Department gets for Operation Lone Star.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Okay.
Second, discussion. Oliver, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item fifteen, Rose, is, uh, Becca Solar, you wanna discuss that in second session, or?
Yes, sir.
And then we'll come.
And then we'll come back to approve that.
Let's skip over that, and then go to item sixteen, and this is final approval for Tierra Santa subdivision, phase three.
Good morning. Yes, uh, Tierra Santa subdivision, we're waiting for final ready, the precinct three.
I do move, uh, second, Your Honor.
Move it, second to approve, discussion. Oliver, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Also, we have final approval for, uh, La Carla subdivision.
Yes, La Carla subdivision is in precinct four, it's ready for.
Moving to approve. Move it, second to approve, discussion. Oliver, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item eighteen also, it's North Gate subdivision, phase two.
Yes, North Gate subdivision, phase two is in precinct one, it's ready for two.
I have a motion, a second, discussion. Oliver, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Precedent two.
Motion carries. Item, uh, and I should, joke about that. Item nineteen is to approve additional voting precincts, eleven through fourteen.
Good morning.
If I'm you all, should we have the, the resolution to adopt a new voting precinct for Starr County? I think it's, uh, for one, one precinct for each two regional precinct?
After we adopt today, how long will this take for you to take into?
What happens to the end of the year to base our changes?
Okay, but can we do, can we change the line here?
Uh, it, it's, you reach there after you are approved, and you have, make any changes, or you're seeing to make any changes that, that, uh, what is required by the Commission's Board, we can come back and make those, amend, amend that order, that resolution, and we can make any new changes.
We can retroll the lines of the.
Absolutely, yeah, but, um, this is coming from, 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 from the Commission's Board.
I understand, but you got my issues, right?
But it can.
We, uh, practice, then we can come back and read the.
The thing is, we, we extended more of the, the weight, uh, we, we have, we have to make the master out and submit those, uh, all taxes to the new orders, where we can, and then we have to educate those new orders for the new, for the new precincts they're gonna have. So we extended, you know, this, that's time for us, uh, there are offers to make the changes, three, three, four.
So.
We have to pass it now.
But if we pass it now, it will be applicable to this election.
Oh, yes, it is.
March.
It is.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
I have a motion, second, Commissioner.
Yep.
Motion, move it, second to approve, discussion. Oliver, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, John. Item. Item twenty is an action item, is to accept three quote alternative, oh, uh, do you wanna explain that, Mr.?
Uh, yes, we, so we put out for bids on, on the asphalt, and we didn't receive any bids from anyone, so our next alternative is to, on a per-case basis, to get, uh, the three quotes.
I mean, Mr. Pettis, I don't see how can we ever get a, a bid on this, listing changes on a daily basis. If the, uh, oil price goes down, it'll go down, if it goes up, it's gonna be up.
Right, and, and I understand due to the volatility at this time, I, I understand that due to the volatility of those prices at this time, that that's
fluctuate.
probably why we didn't get any bids, and so the next best thing that we can do is get quotes every time we purchase asphalt.
Yeah, but if we get quotes, let's say, for example, I go with Ortega, it's, uh, said less, but the transport's gonna cost me two dollars more. What, what's the difference for having the.
Well, it's the lowest, it's, it's the lowest and best.
What else?
So you don't, you don't have to go with the lowest.
Okay, you just want, you just wanted to have on record, in other words.
So we don't have to have the three quotes, and you need to have a reason why you're not going with the lowest.
Because it's, it's farther.
Yeah.
That's gonna be a.
No, definitely, if transport and stuff like that, or even quality of service, or, uh, anything like that, uh, your knowledge of the vendor itself, uh, you may go with a different vendor than the lowest.
Okay, so even though we have gotten a, a two bids, and, and we don't have to go with the lowest bid, we go, we can go with it with a higher bid?
If you've got a good reason for it, yeah. But you want three, three quotes, not two?
What happens if we cannot get three quotes, we only get two quotes?
Keep trying. But the auditors are gonna be looking for us three quotes, not, not a lot.
That's all we have here in the valley.
There's only, there's only two, two vendors.
Yeah.
So how are we gonna do for the other one? Do you want an online quote, or what?
Yeah, that's all you got, I don't know. I don't have an answer for you on that, I can look it up, I can find out, but yeah, if nothing else, somebody from out of the area, that's a quote. What we wanna do is comply with what the auditors are asking us for, basically.
Who's asking that, which auditor asked?
External auditors.
Huh?
External auditors.
The ones that are doing it right now?
Every year, the ones that do it every year. I mean, it can be one, one set of auditors, or a different set.
I mean.
You know, I guess.
I mean, I think it's ridiculous, because, I mean, we can, when are we gonna start working? We, we.
Well, it's, it's what the local government code asks for. There's no, that's making the rules, that's, that's local government code.
Yeah, you know, and then, that's fine, we can get the quotes, the, what I'm concerned about is that third one, 'cause I know, we don't have a third vendor in the valley, we probably have to go to San Antonio, Houston, and, and, I mean, they're not gonna sell product and all that over here.
I mean, if they get your quote.
Well, I, I guess we'll price, you know, plenty more.
I mean, we need to get work done, I mean, we can't wait, I mean, we've been waiting.
That's, that's part of the work. I mean, it's a industry, and I mean, and we don't like to do it, but that's part of it.
I don't keep that as far.
Okay, so.
You need a motion?
Yeah, I need a motion to approve, yes.
How, how many, that three quotes, but I meant.
But where you gonna get the three quotes, we've got any to get from?
Well, I guess what, what we need is, uh, a motion that, that we're gonna try and get three quotes, whether we get it or not, but the time will tell. But, but we do need to, to be on record that.
If we only get two, that is not gonna be sufficient, should start working.
I can't give you an answer right now. I'll look into that, and right now, we're just, we're, while we're saying this, we tried to get bids, we didn't, we weren't able to get any money, and what do we do?
You know, Mr. Pettis, how does, how does Hidalgo and Cameron and Willsy, and, how do they handle this?
I couldn't, uh, I'd be, uh.
And they get, I mean, not over a hundred, two-hundred thousand at a time, two, three-hundred thousand at a time.
Maybe, maybe we should check on them, see how they handle it.
Yeah, I didn't, I, I looked into the local government code, I talked to my mentor in Dimmitt County, and that's what they do. They go to the three quotes. But I didn't check with you.
Yeah, but, you know, well, they, they, I'm sure they have the same problem we do, it, it's, we don't have the vendors, you know, we, we don't mind getting a quote, is we don't have the vendors.
No planters.
Yeah, especially up, up in West Texas, all those areas, they're miles away.
Yeah.
You don't do very far going around.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look at that.
I'll let you know.
Okay, uh, I guess, you know, entertain a motion to approve, and then we'll keep working on. Move it, second, discussion. Oliver, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item twenty-one is a declaration of surplus equipment, uh, by Commissioner Pettis.
Yes, sir, it's three vehicles that I use for picking up branches, uh, I was asking the court to, uh, you know, to carry surplus so I could give them to auction.
One, two, one.
Okay, I can, I can.
You say motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I have a motion, is there a second? Second. Oliver, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item, uh, twenty-two is a request for a loan from the general fund to the, uh, I guess it's a crime victim, uh, for, to pay PO one, three, oh, three, two, one, and this is from the district attorney. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Sir, uh, this, this is the second time he asked for, for a loan.
Yeah.
Where if the audit didn't come in, we're, we're gonna get, we're not gonna get paid back.
Well, no, the, the first batches that, that we loaned out, I believe those should have been paid, because they, they removed them up the vendor hole.
Right.
And they started getting money, should, should have gotten paid, yeah. Uh, now they're on vendor hole again, it's a solid, so they're asking for this money.
Are, are we having a lot of the audit?
Did we recover all the money that we loaned, uh, last year on the?
I don't know that we've gotten that back yet, I know that the reimbursements have been coming in, uh, from the grants, but I don't know if we've actually done the transfer or not. We can find out.
Yeah, and, and we need to keep track, see, that, that's, that's always been my issue, you know, we lend money, we, we approve grants, and then they're supposed to get reimbursed, and I, I never know if we get reimbursed or not, you know, because.
What's the deadline for the, for them to accept the, I, to get the grants approved for this coming year?
Commissioner, that, that's a tough one, you know, because the different funding agencies have different deadlines. Uh, I was told the end of December, however, uh, talking to Mr. Pettis, he says that, uh, it could probably go into January, February.
January, February?
Yeah, that's, uh, but again, it depends on the funding agency, some are real strict, and they probably won't, but some are a little more lenient, they probably will, uh.
Yeah, I know, that's because, one of the, the Amy Young, uh, grant, they denied it, because we had, they had tables over to the ninth of December to get the I.
Yeah, and, and, and that's the problem is applying for, for grants, the, if we don't have the audit, they won't let us apply.
But, but what's, uh, why is that, different agencies are, are different?
Yeah, yeah, different, and different agencies operate differently, uh, so I, I cannot give you an answer, because I don't know.
So.
So, uh, what, what were we?
Get a motion, move second, yeah.
On, on, with, on the loan?
Yeah.
Okay, it, it's only thirty-seven, ninety-five, thirty-two, I'm sorry? I have a motion, a second, discussion. Oliver, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Item, uh, twenty-three through, we, we wanna take them all together?
Or, uh? I asked the judge at the court table, the CPS one, the last one?
Which one?
The very last one. The CPS, I just spoke with the auditor right now, we have some issue on that, on that, on that.
The, the other four, I guess, are okay, I, I didn't see anything.
Yeah. This is an old judge, uh, just, we should work this to, to make it all work, that we did reduce every budget down, um, especially the crime prevention initially, last year we budgeted two fifty, uh, we dropped it down by a hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
it down by a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, because it wasn't, they weren't real numbers last year, this year they're, they're real numbers.
Yeah, yeah, I, I went through it, I saw, and I went through it, and I just had a couple of questions, Mr. Perez was going to look into them, but other than that, I thought it was okay.
And then as I said, the last one, the CPS, that's the one that Mr. Perez did mention, that we have some issues on that.
I think that's the one.
So we're going to approve twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six?
Yeah.
Motion to approve twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, yeah. Table eight, twenty-seven.
Okay, move it, second, discussion. Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner Perez.
Item twenty-eight through.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, our budget amendments, are, are they?
Uh, yeah, we reviewed those, they're all in order, I believe there was one, uh, JP seven, I think, had an amendment also, but it was not on the, on the agenda, so we're going to have to hold that one off till.
Okay, but it's.
It's not on here, yeah, that was the problem, we received the paperwork, but it wasn't on here to, for approval, but all of these that are on here were, were in order.
Okay, I have a motion to approve item twenty-eight through thirty-three.
Second, your honor.
Second. Move, second, uh, discussion. Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. I think that covers everything, an open session. We still have, uh, one, but we'll, we'll come back to, to item fifteen. So it is, uh, eleven o'clock, I'm pursuant to section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four,